Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the August 8, 2024 Board of Selectmen Meeting. This one is totally in on Zoom and we have a not too long of an agenda and then to be followed by a special meeting after that. But as we always do, we will start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance to be followed by a moment of silence for Betsy Frumman. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you can remain standing for a moment of silence for Betsy Frumman, who recently passed away. Betsy was a longtime member of the RTM from District Nine, a wonderful person, and we certainly want to keep Betsy and her family in our prayers. Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 11, 2024?
Lauren Raven, so moved. But before we do that, can I make a motion to amend the agenda?
Sure, absolutely.
I'd like to motion that we move up appointments and nominations before old business.
Absolutely. Is there a second?
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 11, 2024?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then is there a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of July 11, 2024?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Okay, thanks. We'll go on to the updates and then we'll do the amended agenda. We'll start with the first selectments updates. As you know, we had a successful 34th anniversary of the ADA law on July 30. We thought it was well attended and I think the the message there was that we're going to continue to not only comply with the ADA laws, we're going to promote them and promote inclusion as we've stated that we would do and we're going to continue to do that. So as I mentioned that day, these these intersections will absolutely be done and will be ADA compliant, no matter how slow the process is or no matter how many times people want to slow it down, it's going to get done and we're going to be in compliance with the law. So again, thanks, everybody, and certainly Steph Cowie and Alan Gonsberg for being there and really leading the way on that. Also, we are putting out an RFP for that little area there right in front of Restoration Hardware for rededication of Veterans Plaza Park. We are having meetings now about that, just to get that out there. So stay tuned on that. That again, the idea there is to not only rededicate the park, but to light up the obelisk, light up the flagpole, have a little water feature where the fountain is now, that's not working, and then to put a statue of President George H.W. Bush, who grew up here in town and who flew 58 combat missions, and was the youngest person shot down in World War II. So certainly, and he went on to do some pretty good things for our country. So looking forward to that. It's a process like everything else. So we have to comply with everything and make sure that we do it the right way. So more on that, but that's exciting to get that underway. St. Rocks, the feast is underway. We're hoping, as I look out here, that probably the worst week of the year for this, but hopefully we'll be able to get it in between cloud bursts and the storms. But there is some heavy rain on the way. We saw what happened in Georgia and South Carolina. They were predicting up to 25 to 30 inches of rain. They didn't get that, but they got a lot. And even New Jersey last week was flooding all over the place. So that's not that far from here. So far, so good in Greenwich, but we are just, you know, we are preparing on the town side. We are going by all the drains and areas that are prone to flooding and checking them out, but also learning people to take their own precautions and make sure if you know you're in an area that floods, do what you can and certainly we're doing what we can on our end. But just a heads up on that. Also, speaking of a heads up, I got the heads up following with the, what's going on with the Aquarian issue, the, as we know, the state legislature passed legislation that allows Regional Water Authority of New Haven to be able to bid on this. It's not a great thing for the town for many reasons. One, they they would not be paying taxes on areas, lands that they own, and in Greenwich, that's, I think, over half a million dollars a year, but also the rates are much higher. So we're I spoke with Senator Fazio and Chairman BT Chairman Harry Fisher on this. We're going to be formulating questions and paying attention and also testifying at future hearings on that. So stay tuned on that. Friday, next Friday, I will be doing a taping of Power Politics on News 12 to talk about all things Greenwich and to promote our great town. That is at 10, but it's going to be airing on the 17th at 4:30 and then Sunday, the 18th at 11:30. So looking forward to that and on the 25th, this one, I don't know if anybody is interested, but the Sound Beach Community Band, they are really terrific. So if nothing else, they'll be playing at 7 o'clock on the 25th. I will be guest conducting for about a minute or two. Hopefully that doesn't scare people away, but I'm going to be practicing on that. So hopefully it won't ruin the night there.
Are you going to have a baby on your hip?
No, that's Zach. Zach can do that. They're terrific. And then finally, last week, I returned from one of our sister cities in Rose in the hills of Calabria, and we had a great meeting with Mayor Barbieri and town leaders. They're very interested in their, very proud of their affiliation with Greenwich. As you probably saw in some of the photos, that's, they know all about Greenwich. They know all about America, but they truly are proud of their affiliation. And we're trying to find ways to help them to come here and to promote a little bit of cross culture across the ocean there. So hopefully we'll have more of those visits and certainly I think they're planning to come here to town too. So anyway, we'll move on from that. Good to see everybody and turn it over to Lauren.
Thanks, Fred. Good morning, everyone, and welcome back, Fred and Janet, from your out-of-town vacations. I first, I'm looking forward to hearing all about your experience. And I first want to thank our Department of Public Works because, I guess, because it's a big vacation out-of-town time period, we've had a lot of road repavement and they look beautiful and they were done efficiently and effectively. So kudos to DPW. Not much to report. A lot of boards and committees that I'm liaison to do not meet in the July-August time period and happy to report from a building committee perspective. For middle school, we now meet every other week. So we're at a new phase in our building committee. So work is not done, but we're in a new phase. So I'm excited to be participating in that. And that's my update for today.
Thanks, Lauren. And now on to Janet. Welcome back, Janet.
So thank you. Yes, I have a lot of pictures to share. I will say, part of our vacation plans went up in flames. Literally, we were going to go to Jasper National Park and have the town burned down. So that part got canceled. I am so grateful that there was no loss of life and I'm so grateful that Greenwich does not have that sort of risk. That's all I have to say on that. I am looking forward to celebrating the Marquis de Lafayette's the 250th anniversary of his visit. That is August 19. We're having a flag raising at Town Hall at 9 o'clock. Looking forward to that. And absolutely, this is, this month is a great time to catch up on summer reading. It's a quiet time and especially with the rain, this is a really good day to just curl up with a good book. So I will promote Greenwich Reads Together's pick, which is called James. It is a retelling of Huckleberry Finn from Jim's perspective. That's it from me.
Thank you. And thanks for the reminder about the 19th. We're looking forward to that. Okay. Lauren, you're up.
All right. So I have a hard stop at 11. So for accommodating me and pushing this part of the agenda sooner in our meeting. So I do have several nominations for boards, commissions, and committees. The first one, I am making a motion that we nominate Conrad Levy to be a new member of the Commission on Aging, position R1, with the term expiring June 30, 2027.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
The next one is a nomination, I motion that we nominate Lawrence Ambrogno as a new member of the Fair Rent Commission, a new alternate member, position A1 for a term expiring July 1, 2025.
Fred Camillo will second that. All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, no.
The next one, Lauren Raven, I motion that we nominate John Nelson as a new member of the Historic District Commission, an alternate member, position A2 for a term expiring October 31, 2029.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we nominate Michael Behringer as a new member of the Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Agency, alternate member, position A3 for a term expiring October 31, 2027.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we nominate Veronica Cavaroli as a new regular member to the Julian Curtis School Building Committee.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes. I'm sorry. Second, I second. I'm getting ahead of myself here.
You are ahead. That's okay. All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we nominate Ted Baronblum as a new member of the Parks the Parks and Recreation Board for position R5 for a term expiring June 30, 2025.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
And last but not least, I motion that we nominate Ann Noel Jones for a returning member on the Planning and Zoning Commission, position A2 for a term expiring 10/31/2027.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Thank you so much, Lauren. Appreciate that. We only have two items under old business and for that, we have Deputy Chief Craig Gray, who's here with a request for an amendment to the traffic ordinance schedule 14-10-1, parking permit and permit parking cost in term. Morning, Chief.
Good morning, sir. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Excellent. Thank you.
That's good.
The, I don't have anything further. You know, this is the second read on the two that we brought up. I would just say that Parking Services has not received any feedback from the community on this.
Yeah, I have not either. I don't know if my colleagues have. If not, we're ready to vote on this one.
Okay. Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the request for the amendment to traffic ordinance schedule 14-1.1 permit parking cost.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then next up, chief, is a request for an amendment to the traffic ordinance schedule 14-34-1, immobilization, towing, and storage. And I have not heard anything on my end.
And neither have I, sir.
Thank you. And I don't see Lauren or Janet saying they have either. So we're ready to vote.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the request for amendment to traffic ordinance schedule 14-34.1, immobilization, towing, and storage.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you. Now going on to new business and we'll try and get through these as quickly as I can. So Lauren, you can participate as much as possible. The first one up is a request for the approval of a lease of One Horse Neck Lane for the Boys and Girls Club of Greenwich and Christina Vitaria is with us, I believe.
Yes.
Good morning, Christina. How are you?
Good morning. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Thank you all. I don't know if I can share my screen or my video or not, or if that's an option.
If you can.
We should be able to.
I promoted her to panelist.
Okay, thank you, Jenny.
Apologies. Hi, how are you? Thank you all for having us today. We are here to ask if we could exercise our additional, the clause that gives us an additional four-month extension on our current lease of One Horse Neck Lane. We would actually respectfully ask if you would consider both of the extensions, both of the four-month extensions at this time, as we know that we will need them.
Thank you. Yes, I have no problem with it. I know that we're hoping this is the last one because I think some of the neighbors and I think Planning and Zoning is ready to kill us with all of these leases there. But it's really been helpful to, in this case, the Boys and Girls Club, the Fire Department. So I'm grateful that we had this spot there. But you know, I think people are also looking beyond that. But certainly I have no problem with this and I don't know if my colleagues think about it, but certainly I see the progress you're making over there. So it's exciting.
Exactly.
Janet.
I just want to say thank you for all you do for our community. We love the Boys and Girls Club and understood, you know, this, I've likened this site to an Ikea piece of furniture that, you know, you say that you're going to do something else and it just keeps proving to be useful. And if it's supportive of the project, then happy to continue the lease.
Thank you.
Well said, Janet. Love the analogy. It's been a really beneficial swing space for a lot of reasons.
Yeah, and this is not time sensitive. So this is a first read. We could vote on this in two weeks. Am I correct, Christina?
Actually, it is time sensitive because our lease is up at the end of September. So we were hoping you would would consider one read on this.
Okay.
Given the timeframe.
Yeah, no problem at all. That's, we always allow for that if there's a time sensitivity. So certainly we can entertain a motion.
Exactly. And this isn't controversial and there's, we know that the process will allow for, you know, more than one review. So absolutely, I'm in agreement that we can do this on one read.
So Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the request for the lease extension at One Horse Neck Lane for the Boys and Girls Club of Greenwich.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Christina.
And Fred, sorry, just real quickly, there, we can exercise two of the four-month extensions. So just to be clear for the record, are we extending both? Not just one? Is that correct? Or do we need to come back for the second one?
You know, just in keeping what we've done, I would just come back just so we can, you know, stand top. Obviously, you know, our support on this, but I think, yeah, it is, we're trying to be consistent. We ask all these, the, these contractors now, when they have, they get a permit for like six months, whatever, to check back with us and just give us an update. So probably a good thing to have, give us an update in four months.
I will mark my calendar.
Thanks, Christina.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate it so much.
Have a great day.
Bye.
Thanks. Okay, the next up on the agenda, new business is a request for the approval of intersection modifications at Valley Road and River Road and the extension, River Road Extension across from Schofield Street. Lauren and I are very familiar with this area. The reason why this is before us is a good friend and resident Frank Canavero has been asking the town for a while to take a look at this intersection. And having grown up there, I could tell you, people have been hit there several times, going back way before we were even born. But I remember as a kid, who the people were that were hit and it's only gotten worse. It doesn't align that intersection. It's right where the St. Lawrence Club is and back Sindale Cycles. Doesn't align perfectly, but we think we have a way to slow traffic down there. So I'll turn it over to our DPW Civil Engineer, Michael Kisselak. Michael, good morning.
Good morning. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good morning. Thanks for having us. Like you said, I'm a civil engineer in the Department of Public Works and we're here to discuss Valley Road at the offset intersections of River Road Extension and Schofield Street. So this is, as you said, one that's been on the town's radar for quite some time and it comes up repeatedly to us. It came up at the, at the board meeting in January, I believe, and at some of the meetings we had in the spring about traffic safety. So we've been analyzing it since, for the last couple of months and collecting data. And we submitted a report that kind of outlines everything, but I'll try to touch on the highlights. So we looked at crash data, speeds, volumes, ped crossings, pedestrian crossings, and sightlines and tried to look through various solutions. And of everything we looked at, our recommendation is to install Always Stop Control for the intersection. We see that it's warranted because of the history of crashes, the patterns that we see. Going back to 2016, there have been 21 crashes reported to the police. And then since 2021, there have been nine and four of those involved bikes and peds. Like you said, there's a bike shop right nearby and many of them have been angle collisions. So those are ones that we typically see are correctable by Always Stop. I do have a plan that was submitted in the report. If I can share my screen, we can kind of talk through it quickly, just for the highlights. And then I will.
I'm promoting you to panelist and then I'll make you a co-host so you can share your screen. Oh, wait a minute, Ken, you're going to have to, I don't have the permissions. It's your meeting. So you can give Michael permission to give him co-host permission.
Or you can pull it up if you have the, if you have the report. It's just one, one page.
I don't know.
It is in everyone's packets.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ken, for the audience.
Oh, he can share screen now, so.
Yep. Okay. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, so this is what we're proposing to do. It's, it's a little bit not straightforward with the, the offset of the intersection. But what we're proposing to do is to bring both side streets and Valley Road into a single, the single intersection for Always Stop Control. So on the left side of the screen, you'll see that the stop bar and the stop sign would be placed just before Schofield Street. We did consider kind of leaving out Schofield Street since it's the smaller road and putting the stop sign closer to River Road Extension. But we felt like not having Schofield in there would just end up causing confusion. And also, anybody coming off of Schofield Street would then sort of be caught. They wouldn't have enough distance to really align themselves and they might end up with their tail sticking out into the other lane, since there's not really enough space there to turn. So that's the, that's the Always Stop configuration. And then we've also seen a document that there's the sightlines off of River Road Extension are not, are not what we would want to see. And so we are proposing to pull forward the stop sign, the stop bar and stop sign a little bit, just to indicate where, where people should pull out to, so that they can see a little better where the stop bar is now. It's, it's about 30 feet back. So people will naturally pull up just so that they can, they can get a better vantage point. But this is, and this is about that point. It's, it's a little bit challenging with the private business that's there at that corner. But we feel like this is the best we can do in this situation. And then that will help everybody see, see who else is stopped and waiting to go at the intersection. We're also going to do as much advanced warning signage as we can along Valley Road since it's a new condition. We're, we're planning also to put out variable message boards to kind of alert everybody that there's a new traffic pattern because we don't want anybody to, that uses the road habitually to kind of be surprised when they get there. So we're going to do as much advanced warning as we can to make sure that, to make sure that, you know, they don't, they're not, they're not surprised when they get to the, to the intersection here. And we're going to monitor this. If you all approve it, we'll monitor it for a few months going, going forward, just to make sure everything's operating okay. But we do need the ordinance approved so that it is an enforceable condition. So we included a proposal for the ordinance modification in the packet. And so with you all as the legal traffic authority, that's what we're asking you to consider approving. And so that's, in a nutshell, I'll take any, any questions you may have.
Thank you, Michael. Yeah, and this is, looking at it from above, obviously, people who live in Costco are very familiar with it. It is a very tricky intersection. As Michael said, it doesn't really line up. So it takes some out-of-the-box thinking to slow the traffic down and create better sightlines. And looking at that, I can remember where people were hit just walking in that area. So I think this would be a great, you know, sign to the people there that the town is aware and is going to respond to this. And I think it'll be a great improvement safety-wise to the area. And I know it's a first read, so we'll certainly, we'll have two weeks to, you know, listen to feedback, but I think it's probably well-received, I assume.
So I have a question. The stop sign on Valley Road, is that far along enough to see somebody stopped on River Road Extension?
The one that's on the, on the left side of the screen?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. So if you're, if you're stopped at that, you will, there's nothing really obstructing you from seeing over to that, that stop bar on, on River Road Extension. And, you know, you'll, you'll also be moving from, from a stop, so you won't be at a, at a high-speed conflict, even if, even if somebody did come through there that you, that you didn't expect.
Yeah, I, my brother's driveway was right across from River Road Extension. I always felt like very scared pulling in and out of that. So this hopefully will, you know, be an improvement, especially to anything that's around there. The only thing I would also suggest, I think people need a lesson in what to do at an Always Stop, like when four cars are there, like who goes first? So maybe that could be part of, you know, if not, the Department of Public Works, maybe something Fred and your community connections or something coming from the police to, to remind people what to do at a four-way Always Stop.
Yeah, and we're happy to work with everybody to get that in the newsletter and make sure it's clear. And we'll work with the Police Department to make sure they know that this is, this is going to be a new configuration. And we do also add, you've probably seen it elsewhere, the plaque that goes on the stop sign that says Always Stop, so that you, you aren't confused on, you know, if the other approach next to you has to stop as well. So that, that should help.
So I concur. I think this looks like an improvement. I also would support making sure that we are promoting the fact that this is a proposed change so that people are aware and that we'll, we'll be voting on it at our next meeting.
Thank you. And yeah, Michael, we'll certainly, we'll get that out there and when the time comes after the vote, whatever you send to us, we'll definitely get it in the When the time comes after the vote, whatever you send to us, we'll definitely get it in the weekly blast.
Sure thing.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Appreciate it.
All right.
Yeah, have a great day.
Take care.
Take care. Okay, next up is the. Approval of the revised language for the ordinance to ban traveling acts from using specific wild animal species within the town of Greenwich. Barbara Schellenberg, our town attorney is here.
Good morning.
Morning, Barbara. So yeah, this is pretty much what we we. Already vetted and talked about weeks ago. We just wanted to make sure this. Before we get it off to the RTM that we had all the correct language in there.
Right. So there is some additional language that the board had indicated when you last looked. Considered this matter, just to review. You had approved. The ordinance as written in your packet. But you had also indicated that you wanted to add language. To say the regulations would not affect an act traveling through Greenwich where an animal may be in distress and may need care. So what I am suggesting is adding the following language. In section four, one forty five, which is entitled prohibition. It would simply be. An additional subsection, number three. Which would state this section shall not prevent any animal that is traveling through the town of Greenwich. From receiving necessary veterinary care. And I think that would, you know, cover what the board had indicated. In.
Yeah, when the person who in the audience who asked for that. You know, personally, I didn't think it was needed. I think it was pretty clear that that obviously we would treat animals. There was nothing saying that we couldn't. Treat an animal with it in the traveling circus, traveling through Greenwich. It wasn't about that, but we figured. You know, it doesn't hurt at all to include it. So that's why it's included. Is it totally necessary? I don't think so, but I think it doesn't hurt it. And if somebody. Brought it up and it makes, you know, somebody in town more comfortable with it, I was fine with it. So. I don't know. My colleagues feel the same way, but yeah. And we've already discussed this. We can vote on this today because we've already discussed this. This is just a language. Classification and addition. Sorry. Okay, thank you. Yeah, we'll vote on this and get it to the RTM and then they can have at it.
Okay, great.
Thanks, Barbara.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve, along with the revised language, the ordinance to ban traveling acts from using. Specific wild animal species within the town of Greenwich.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you so much. Thanks, Barbara.
You're welcome.
All right. Have a good one. So next up is request for support of renewal of the Westchester County. TUA, which is an airline terminal use agreement. And our friends Rich Flood and John Mistracchio, who are our Greenwich representatives to that task force. Are with us. I think I saw John.
Yeah, we don't have Rich, but we do have John.
Yeah, I saw his name there somewhere.
He's here. John, you may speak.
Okay.
Morning, John. Can you hear us? John, I don't know if John is muted.
I'm sorry, I promoted him. I figured it, you know, so if he wants, he can turn on his video.
There we go. Oh, yeah. Rather than stumble around, I'll leave the video off. Ken, I know otherwise you'd have to pay royalties to SAG if you see me.
The rich and famous are here.
Yeah. I just go there for craft services. Before we get started, Lauren, I want to echo your comment about the four way intersection. I still find it confusing. But I'm reminded of something I learned back in high school and that is about a four way intersection. If you have a. A police car, a fire engine and gems all with their lights and sirens going and the fourth one is a fire as a mail truck. Who has the right of way? And it turns out it's the the mail truck because it's federal. Certainly, I would hope they'd give way. Anyway, with regard to the terminal use agreement. Any discussion about the airport can easily go down a rabbit hole. And I just want to focus on what we're trying to do here. So the terminal use agreement boiled down to its simplest form is that it. Only allows for 240 passengers per half hour to go through the terminal. This is one of those grandfather things that exists, I'm fairly sure, in at only Westchester Airport. And if we were to lose it. We would not be able to get it back again. It is against the federal regulations. The town, the. The county of Westchester does want to extend this, the terminal use agreement for another 20 years. I believe it's ten, five and five. I'm not sure about the format. And the committee was or the task force was created really to to voice approval for that. The the upside is that we all got together, the communities, and have created a front essentially. And on a positive note, because we're in agreement with the county. And that counts for all the communities and especially for us, because we're in a different state. And essentially, the county doesn't have to listen to anything we have to say. So being partners with the surrounding communities, now they no longer have to be able to say, well, we don't know what everybody wants. They all kind of know that we stand together. I wish Rich were with us. Rich worked on another, one of the subcommittees regarding noise and. And also environmental concerns. And those are all valid concerns. And I think that our participation in this task force. Leads into continued discussion. And in fact, I know the task force is already doing that. So this is the first step into having our voice heard. And I would hope that we would approve. The county engaging or re-engaging the terminal use agreement. Are there any questions about what we've done?
No, thank you, John, and thank you to Rich too. You're absolutely right. They don't need to listen to us. We fortunately have a great relationship with Westchester County officials, including. County Executive George Latimer, who's been a great friend. To me personally, but to the town of Greenwich. Lives over in Rye and. And, you know, the town of Port, City of Porchester, Village of Porchester, say, City of Rye. They've all been great partners. So I agree, you know, having. Continuing that relationship and being engaged with them helps us. And I know I've learned. Just for people who may live in the northwest part of town who may maybe just moved there and they're always wondering about flight patterns and what we can do and. You know, having done a public forum with George Latimer, you know, found out that, you know. Westchester, you know, with these flight patterns and everything that goes on there, they do change them periodically. But with Westchester County sued the FAA years ago, they lost. And so. About, you know, flights after 12. So there was just an agreement that they would not do flights after 12 o'clock because this comes up all the time. And they pretty much hold to that. In the last few years, the federal government started dropping off migrants and that is true. We don't have a schedule, but we know that's true and that the county officials were frustrated with that. I know they were getting blamed, but they're actually frustrated with the federal government too with that. So that was. The federal government can do that. They can allow for that, but they do try to hold to that gentleman's agreement that they'll do their best not to have flights between midnight and 6:00 AM. And they do change traffic patterns periodically, but us having this great relationship with them. Helps us get information out to Greenwich residents and also to convey concerns. So again, thank you to you and Rich for for serving on this and. I don't know if Lauren or Janet have any comments or questions for you.
I'm sorry, Janet, didn't mean to interrupt. I just wanted to clarify the voluntary restraint from flight. The key word there is voluntary. And of course, my phone rings in the middle of this. The voluntary restraint from flight is between midnight and 6:30 AM. And the airlines, as a rule, adhere to that. Schedules being what they may, you'll get flights landing. Sometimes up until midnight or one in the morning. Just a bit of information. I got my pilot's license at Westchester Airport, so I kind of know how things work there. FYI, the control tower closes at 11:00. So you might want to plan your flights, your return flights accordingly. If it looks like it's going to come in at quarter after 11:00, maybe pick an earlier flight. But there's a gentleman named John and Sarah, who is responsible for the Norris Ordinance. At Westchester and he does yeoman's work. He's, I mentioned that he's a lot like Sisyphus. He's pushing that rock up the hill and it keeps rolling back over him. It's never going to be perfect, but. When he gets complaints, he does go to the quote unquote offending airline or FBO. And toss them and says, listen, we're trying to be good neighbors here. Don't make it hard for us. We got a good thing. Don't ruin it. So you'll see, that's why it's getting better over time. And this plays the whole terminal use agreement thing plays into the concept of. Not expanding the airport. And I had this discussion with April Gaspari, who's the head of the airport. And I said, you know, I remember a time when this was a small little place with a Quonset hut. And when the county proposed the expansion or the modernization. There were restrictions put in place, one being the parking garage. So that when now people say, well, we've outgrown the parking garage, my response is, then it's working as designed because the comment at the time was. We can't get any bigger because we can only park this many cars. So when they come back and say, well, we need more parking, my answer is, no, you don't. So anyway, that was my little afterthought. So Janet, I'm sorry I stepped on you as I jumped in there.
Oh, not at all. I just wanted to I wanted to thank you for your service. This is really, this is really an important issue. And just, I wanted to elaborate a little bit just for our public audience. That if we, if there isn't a renewal of the terminal use agreement. That what you're saying is that the FAA could actually increase the number from 250 to something higher.
That's correct. And it'd be no going back because it's a grandfathered clause at this point.
Okay.
So I echo the thanks. Thanks, John. Thanks, Rich, for participating. I know early on, Fred and our term, it was it was. Just about COVID time, we were starting to pull things together. So thank you for taking it off of our plates. And participating in this really important relationship. And, you know, I know a lot of people in Greenwich do use that as the airport. So to have a voice and have a vehicle to express. You know, what we're thinking about. And I'm confident that most people realize it's a give and take, you know, the luxury of having an airport, you know, minutes away. You know, there is some downside to that as well.
Yes, you're absolutely right, Lauren. It is give and take. There's it's a great asset and it creates problems at the same time. So that ongoing relationship and negotiation is critical for Greenwich in particular.
Yeah, and it also, and speaking with George Latimer, he was telling me that. His administration, when he's leaving office to run for Congress now, but he. They were not in favor of expansion of the airport, but he said, that's not ironclad. The next town, you know, county executive. Could have a different view on it. In fact, the previous one, who is a friend of mine, also had a different view on some of that stuff. So. You know, it's keep having that relationship there is critical. And so again, thank you. All right, so we'll we'll circle back with that in two weeks. It's not time sensitive, correct?
I believe John thinks it is time sensitive.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Yeah, yes, he did say that. I'm sorry.
And.
Explain why, just so people know.
Yeah, so I'm going to say this and it's going to sound like we're late. We're the last of the municipalities to approve this. So rather than go a little further, if there's no. No opposition, I would, I don't know if I have to make a motion to waive a second read or if it's just a matter of procedure for you. It would be nice to get rid of this today. Now, and I realize now I'm throwing it over the wall at Barbara because she's the one who asked to formulate this, but yeah, if we can approve this, that'll be great.
Yeah, I feel out of respect for them.
I reviewed the resolution. I don't have any issues with it. You know, the the board has to decide it. If you want to waive the second read, obviously, and vote on it, and this would need to go to the RTM.
Well, given the fact that we have to go to the RTM now, then I would suggest that probably doing it today is is better.
Yeah, because our next meeting is the 22nd and our submission to the RTM is due on Friday. So this gives. You know, more time to get it in front of them for their September meeting.
Right, and they will vet it. They will ask many, many questions. So yeah, it's not like we're, you know, signing off on it here. So yeah, I think we should absolutely vote and get it over to them.
I agree. It's, you know, I like second reads when to allow for public input, but absolutely the RTM process does that as well. So. So I'm fine with I'm fine with voting on it today.
So Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the request to support the renewal of the Westchester County Airport Terminal Use Agreement.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Thank you very much.
John, thank you so much and thanks for saving us some money and not turning on your your screen there. So.
I'll come sign autographs later.
Thanks, pal. Take care.
You too.
Thanks. Okay, next up, we have just two more items, a discussion of the proposed. Ordinance to address the feral cat situation within the town of Greenwich. And we've heard a lot from about one particular neighborhood in. OG and I. There was, there's no ordinance on the book, so I reached out to. My friends on the state level, including Annie Hornish, who is the State Director for the Humane Society of the United States. And Annie's on this call too. Very helpful. We know there's, we have the ability to do something like this. And being an animal lover, you know, I care first about the animals that may be in a bad. Situation. And then also the neighbors have brought up some situations and concerns. And there's probably a couple of other issues there that we should come into play here. So with that, I'll turn it over to Barbara.
Thank you, Fred. So we did look into this as Fred mentioned, we checked the our nuisance ordinance to see if that would be. An avenue to deal with this situation. And unfortunately, it is not because nuisance. In the ordinance is defined very specifically and wouldn't deal with a situation like this. However, there is a statute. It's section 22 dash 339D, which I believe you have in your in your packet. And it allows a municipality to adopt an ordinance, an ordinance. Requiring the registration within one year of the adoption of the ordinance. Of keepers of feral cats in residential or commercial areas and. And there's there's more to it. But the bottom line is. That Greenwich could pursue such an ordinance. If the town desires to do that. And I don't think we would have to reinvent the wheel here. We're checking with CCM. To see if there are other municipalities in Connecticut that have adopted such an ordinance and, you know, we could take a look at the language. That has been used and come back if if the board desires and present. Sample language for you to take a look at. But basically, I just want to know at this point in time, if that is something that the town would like to pursue.
Yeah, I think I'm totally in favor of this. It's always good to have ordinances on the books to address possible situations like this and not have it remain silent because it's. You know, when someone calls in with a concern and we don't have anything on the books, it's frustrating to them. It's frustrating to us and. I agree to see if there's a blueprint somewhere else, so you don't have to reinvent the wheel. So I think, you know, maybe we could circle back to this at the next meeting and see if we've come up with something for further discussion. And then to hopefully eventually get something over to the RTM. Any? Questions or comments?
So what you're suggesting is that we would have a sample at our next meeting or today we're just signaling to start the work because I don't want to put. An unfair burden on your team, Barbara.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I don't I don't know if we'll be ready with a with a sample. At the next meeting, I'm going to be on vacation next week. We have a lot of vacations in the law department, but we can certainly keep it moving. You know, and and if not the next meeting, then I would think the meeting after. You know, and, and if not the next meeting, then I, I would think the meeting after that, we probably would be able to, to have sample language.
That's very fair, and it's, it's August. So hopefully, I know there's some people.
We do have residents who'd like to speak on this issue.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we have some residents here. I don't know if they all want to speak, but certainly know when they're on here. So they can at least know that if it's, you know, the next meeting, they don't hear anything. It's not that we forgot about it. It's that it will have a sample in front of us to discuss sometime in the next month or so. And then further discussion to hopefully get it over to the RTM. So I think that's very fair.
I agree. I think that this is a good way to move forward. We definitely want to nip this in the bud in a humane way, so I'm glad that we would be looking at the Humane Society for any kind of guidance. We're certainly not the only community that has this problem. And I know, I know there's a town in Colorado that actually has a feral bunny problem, which sounds terribly cute, but it's not. So I understand completely, and thank, thank you very much for.
I could talk about cluster flies.
Thank you. And I, we totally agree on this. So I think.
Pam Petito would like to speak?
Yeah.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, morning.
Good morning. And thank you, Mr. Camilla, for working with us to help solve this problem. It is definitely frustrating. And we want a humane solution, but also a fair solution for the residents. Because what we're dealing with is just not fair to us. We've been enjoying living in our home in Old Greenwich for the past thirty years, but that changed four years ago. When a neighbor on Shore Road brought home a litter of kittens. Without the benefit of spraying or neutering, their numbers have grown tremendously. The males spray our patio furniture. They mark the perimeter of our home, even our front door. You can imagine coming home to find cat urine on your front door threshold, and it's happened many times. They've used our raised organic vegetable garden as a litter box, so I can no longer use that for my vegetables. They leave feces all over our lawn and patio. If not covered, they will bed down on our outdoor cushions covered with ticks and fleas. I've had to replace numerous furniture covers because they reek of cat spray. At times, the smell of cat urine and feces is so unbearable that we have to actually cover our nose in order to walk to our car. Every day, we attempt to shoo cats off our property, but they continue to return. The cats are territorial, so the more cats there are, the wider spread the problem becomes. This is not going to just go away. This year, I know of three females that had kittens. This morning, I saw four of them in our backyard playing. There are currently also six adults that frequent our property. That's ten yards in our, ten cats in our yard alone. I'm in contact with over a dozen other neighbors with the same problem, and I am sure there are many others. Many of these cats are sick or injured, and Greenwich Animal Control has removed both sick and injured cats from our property. Unfortunately, the trap neuter and release will not rid us of these problems I've mentioned. These feral cats really must be completely removed from the area. This is not, this has become not only a town nuisance, but a public health issue. That said, we are willing to cooperate in any way we can. To resolve this very upsetting issue because we have lost the peaceful enjoyment of our home and surrounding property. Thanks.
Thank you, Pam, and thanks for describing what's going on there so people get a better idea. As you said, it's not fair to the cats, it's not fair to the, to the residents. We're just trying to enjoy their lives and mind their own business. So we will get a sample in front of us to discuss and vote on and get it over to the RTM. So it's too bad that we have to do this, but you know, it's not the first time. Over the years here in town, I, I remember growing up, there was a couple situations like this. And it didn't end until the person moved on. And so we, we certainly don't want people waiting because who knows when that's going to be. So it does affect your quality of life. So certainly, we will, we're going to stay on top of this. So I want to thank you and everybody who's on here in the neighborhood. I see some familiar names who did reach out. You, you did the right thing. Your advocacy and the town heard you. So thank you. Any other? Comments or questions? Okay, not seeing any. Thank you, Pam. Much appreciated. Okay, the last item, and I think Lauren is off now. She had to leave. We have one last item. It's discussion of potential improvements to Calf Island. And Peter Alexander is here. Peter, do you want to unmute yourself? Peter?
Gotcha. Peter, I'm going to promote you to panelist if you want to share your screen.
Oh, that would be terrific.
I just sent you the invite. Right, also, so you guess you show, you can share your PowerPoint that way.
Thanks, Ken. Okay, Peter, you're up. The floor is yours.
We had him a second ago.
This is going to be the shortest presentation you ever gave.
I think he will try and get back in.
Sorry to let you down. Here I am again.
All right, the floor is yours.
How do I give you my screen? There's something like.
Hold on a second. Let me, let me try and do that for you. Guess I'll make you a co-host. Don't abuse your power, Peter, please.
Why not?
Please, as a personal thing. You, you should be able to share your screen now.
Really? What do we do? This is cool. Share?
You can just share the, show the PowerPoint. There you go. So you can just show the PowerPoint presentation you prepared.
How do I get the right screen?
That's on you.
All right, so I see, I see Byron Beach there, so. Keep going.
You got a great background, by the way, on yours.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm really here to stick up for salt marshes. And. Try to.
All right, Peter, yeah, I started to interrupt you, but right now, I'm, I don't know what I'm, I'm looking at International Cat Day.
It was speaking of cats.
Yeah, I wanted to bring that up because of the last.
Not right now.
My accident that it showed up. Here we go. Let me see if I can pull the screen. Yeah, that's a.
All right, so you're, you're, you're here, you're here to talk about.
We can see that.
Can see that now?
Yes.
So I want to. Get a little. Personal here and make sure I keep my reputation. It's Peter Alexander, landscape architect. Seventy-six-year Greenwich resident, forty-year licensed in New York and Connecticut. And one of the coolest things I happened on accidentally, I hope you enjoy it. Can you see this screen? Pointing to one picture and then another.
Yeah.
I literally called a guy, twenty seventeen, who had done a small dredging project nearby. And. I said. I won't hold you to it too tight, rough price per cubic yard. And explain, I, I sent him. A rough outline of Caroline Pond. And before I finished. He said, do you remember they filmed it? I said, yeah, actually, the, the little project we worked on. And said, have you heard of YouTube? Yeah, I said, yeah. And I was on my computer and I typed in dredge and here's what came up. In Finland, but it looks almost exactly like. Caroline Pond in many ways. It is, has more trees, but all private ownership. And no one wanted any dredging because it was going to ruin the environment. Until everything turned green and started to smell. And then. The process that this amazing company had gone through over thirty years. Finland's a pretty small country, but they have a hundred, almost two hundred thousand lakes, and they, they came up with this machine. That was tested over thirty years and. It's in fifty countries. I brought it to the United States. I got Jones Act approval, but I'm not a salesman. I am a specifier in, for the quick project I'm going to talk about, I promised less than five minutes, right? Is. The federal project at, at National Fish and Wildlife Service. And the. Yeah, so the person in charge is. Is all excited that we might be able to pull this off. And I think the, the main point is. That. Working with nature to have fun for all our generations. Including, I like to say, all creatures great and small, but this is an example of. One of the things that has flowed and feared the dredging of Caroline Pond. Is that the toxic materials in there. And safety and welfare certainly is top priority. But one of the things that's been able to be done is the. Yield is pumped into these giant socks, if you want to call them. And you can have them made, so if you want to build a trail, you can have the trail pre-made in these. Curtains, if you will, or long socks and pump in. And then if there's a toxin, you could treat it. As it's pumped, or. If it's a liquid toxin, as it comes out, it can be heated right after that thing. The good news about Caroline Pond is, except from road runoff and so forth, the chemicals that went in there were heavy metals. And really, none of it happened after World War Two, when most of the polys were invented that. Are a problem. So it, it, the test came back surprisingly well.
Yeah, no, this is interesting. I, I know you had showed this before this presentation. I think it says you're doing a potential improvements on Calf Island, right? Am I, so is that where you're?
Yes, okay, so you, you're, you're familiar with the beneficial use of. The material. This is one of my favorites, and then I'll go on. This is what it looked like before. This is what the clear water and this is the way. The fact that salt marshes can. Capture four hundred times per acre the. Tree canopy and that we've taken all of our marshes out led to a preliminary plan and approval. Back in twenty twelve, twelve, anyway, they, this is the original drawing that we'll rely on. And I, I wanted to stick up for salt marshes. This is a rendering of our nineteen eighty-nine plan for the restoration of. Hozkab Harbor in Mayanus. It, it's a, it's a triple whammy. You don't have to pay to ship the stuff out of town. You restore the salt marshes nearby and you can stabilize it. For instance, with a walkway like we've, we've done in a couple of countries. You get a big storm and you lose the walkway, you pound it back in and. Well, get a unofficial use. This is pretty small to see. This is the. Location of the. Salt marshes in Greenwich before they were torn out. This was the original amazing survey for the railroad that came through. In Greenwich, we have a lot of waterways and sub-waterways under jurisdiction. And we also have a lot of roads. And I think the, the thing that I found really super exciting. Is the cost is absurdly down. And using this method, and the town's really not going to have to pony up any money. I do have a gentleman's bet from a wicker rocking chair set. That I, I don't want to say their name, but that would, once I get some public support, just like you guys. I think that would, would trigger something. And I also, to, to sum up, was I more than five minutes? I'm sorry. The, to, to sum up, like wink, maybe prefer to wink and a nod. But a, just a sliver of encouragement to. Use this. With, in conjunction with the Army Corps of Engineers, because as you know, the National Fish and Wildlife Service owns. And has all the rights to the Calf Island area, and that's why it's a perfect pilot project. Anyway, I may not be perfect, but I don't want to crash my plane as the pilot. So please, give me a little encouragement and I'll be very happy.
Okay, any questions, Janet?
Well, so encouragement of what? What is the, what is the ask that's before us?
That you would encourage and say that my involvement. Will be directly reported to you and that I will be responsible entirely for any actions that I take with.
Involvement with what?
The permit process and the execution of. Rebuilding salt marshes.
So, so this is similar to the requests in the Pemberwick area with public property. And I, I don't think the town law department nor the risk manager is going to look favorably upon this. Did we get to ask him again? But it's.
This does not depend on. Pemberwick, unfortunately. This is Calf Island.
But either way, we have, we have a process. We have a town process, and if it didn't, if it didn't meet standards for. For that project, I don't see how it's going to meet standards for this, what you're proposing here.
Well, this is all federal. You, you don't really have any say to it. That's why it's just a wink and a nod. They'll, they'll do whatever they want, no matter what you say.
Yeah, again, I don't. I don't know how we can ignore what we normally would do if it was town property, whether it's federal or state. That we're talking about and just push it off to them. I mean, have you reached out to the congressman's office? They're usually pretty good about getting back to you and seeing, again, that's part of the McKinney Refuge. And it is federal, but have you reached out to them?
I have not in, I've only reached out to the Army Corps. In that they are really looking, they have some squeaky clean dredge yield that they're, they're looking for placement places for. So I'm happy to go with the, the other interested parties. But National Fish and Wildlife Service, not foundation, but service. In conjunction with the Army Corps, I've worked with them since nineteen seventy-five. So I know how to get that stuff done. I just want your approval of the concept. That rebuilding salt marshes. In the Calf Island area. Is a good way to. Show that we can revitalize and protect our coast. The salt marshes also cut eighty percent of the. Storm surge power. And Hurricane Sandy and the azimuth of Sandy twice. Both when it was straight from the east and then straight from the south is textbook for. The, the Army Corps is going to come and visit me and start the survey work. And be happy to invite you. It should happen pretty soon, in the next ten days or so.
Okay, I mean, yeah, I mean, the benefits are great, and I've had some interesting ideas over the years there that. In theory, it makes a lot of sense, but again, I, we don't really have any say there. I would be happy to put you in touch with Jimmy Ticky, who runs the congressman's office. He's very, very responsive. And see if you can get some guidance from them. We're. We do that all the time on federal issues to get some guidance and connections there, and I think that's probably the place to go. And if you send me a note, I'll introduce you to Jimmy via email.
Include a little support by you and the other select people. Include a little support by you and the other select people?
What, yeah, I mean, I can't speak for Lauren. Again, I, I don't. All I can say is that you're, you know, you're a longtime resident, you're a volunteer, you've done a lot of this work. Again, I it's over my pay grade, a lot of this stuff, so I got to be careful what I say, because I'm not, we're not, Jen and I, we're not just citizens. We actually have a responsibility. We, anything we say can be construed as an official town position, and you know, I, you know, we have to look a little bit more into that, but again, I can put you in contact with the congressman's office, and certainly, you're, you're free to, to work through them, and I don't know what they'll say. I, I can't speak for them either, but you know, we reach out to them all the time for guidance and cooperation, and they're, they're usually very, very, very good with that. Yeah, send me an email, and I'll, I'll introduce you to Jimmy, and and you can keep us posted on how that's going, because again, I don't want to speak for them either.
I know, I've been back and forth with Lauren. She, you know, she has a engineering degree. She's pretty sharp, so Janet, please say, go for it, kid.
You said Lauren, but I think you meant Janet.
I did.
But what I would say, what I would.
Accidentally said something nice about you in public.
What I would say, though, is, so we love salt marshes, but I'm going to, I'm going to echo what Fred said, which is, you know, our board is, this is not our expertise, and we don't want to act outside of our authority. So, so I think, you know, I like the suggestion. Put you in touch with Jimmy Ticky, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't say based on a five-minute presentation that we would, that we would endorse this particular technology.
It's really not the technology, it's just the concept. We have to figure out whether technology is going to work there, and it's just encouraging to rebuild the salt marshes.
Yeah, I, yes, I think we have a path forward here. Send me an email, I'll introduce you to Jimmy, and you can ask them for some guidance on that and some support, and then you could just keep us posted on how that's going.
Okay, say something nice, please.
Thank you. We appreciate it, Peter. As always, thank you.
Well, our town is incredibly amazing and worth doing everything we can to improve it, and I, I really I kind of get teared up about the ADA stuff, because again, we're in some ways leading the world, but we need to catch up, and I think we should catch up in rebuilding marshes, too. Thank you.
Okay, no, thank you. Much appreciated. And we'll talk offline and send me an email, and I'll get it over to the congressman's office. Okay, thank you. We've already done the appointments and nominations.
Yes, we have one person who wishes to speak during the public comment period. Ms. Lorraine Taylor had reached out in advance to speak about the Historic District Commission, and Ms. Taylor, you may speak.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good morning. Yes, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Again, Lorraine Taylor. I own three oh two Delavan Avenue Real Estate Parcel and Barn section of Greenwich. I have several multi-generational families connected to the barn section of Greenwich, including my lion family ancestors interred at the ancient historic lion family cemetery located at the intersection of Barn Shore Road and Barn Dock Street. I'm also a member of the middle socioeconomic demographic. I have three comments to make, public comments regarding subjects that were discussed during this meeting.
Well, if you could keep it to what you signed up for, Ms. Taylor, that's, that's what our rules are. We, you sign up to speak on a specific item or items, so you, I don't, you wanted to talk about this district commission, so you have the floor.
Okay.
And if you want, you can come back the next time. Just let us know ahead of time.
I appreciate that. Yes, it was also pertaining to what was discussed earlier, but I, I can understand what you're saying.
Yeah, no, absolutely. You just let us know right after the meeting, and we'll put you on there, whatever you want to discuss, that's fine. I just, I'm trying to keep everything consistent, so, but I appreciate it, and again, you have the floor on the Historic District Commission.
Sure, the only point I would like to say in regards to the agenda and the minute draft that was discussed earlier from July eleventh. Today, I printed off from the Town of Greenwich website a material that's labeled Notice of Meeting for Public Agencies, and the date in the bottom right-hand margin is nine, six, twenty, twenty-three. It talks about notice requirements for meetings, and one of the final bullet points is minutes must list the members who attended the meeting in person and who attended the meeting remotely. So when I printed off the draft of the meeting minutes from July eleventh, my name did not appear, although I did join in. And subsequent to that meeting, I did complete a FOIA request form that I received brief acknowledgement from Mr. Borse, and on that FOIA form dated July eleventh, I requested a copy of the candidate nomination form completed and received by the Selectman's Office that resulted in the candidate being contacted for an interview scheduled today, meaning July eleventh, regarding the Historic District Commission. So it wasn't until today that I learned that candidate who appeared July eleventh meeting was John Nelson. And so focusing on the form submission that was acknowledged by Mr. Borse, I will would like to know if anyone reviewed that form submission in advance of this meeting, which pertained to the Historic District Commission.
I have, I have not seen it, Ms. Taylor, but again, what, what does that, you, you asked to speak about the Historic District Commission, so can you just get to that, please, because you're, you're going in other directions now. Is, is that, is it that particular person that you wanted to speak about?
Well, now that I know as of today that it's John Nelson, I was able to search the Town of Greenwich website during this meeting, and it, his bio appeared on page one, one, two of the Town of Greenwich Plan of Conservation and Development Town Properties Committee Report dated March twenty-seven, twenty-twelve. So I just want to confirm, and then I have a follow-up question. Is this the John Nelson who was voted today during this meeting? That's described on this page one, twelve, John Nelson, District Eight, retired international lawyer specializing in ship financing and international transactions, co-chairman of New York State Bar Association Admirality Committee, Chairman of Association of Bar City of New York Admirality Committee. Greenwich residents in nineteen seventy-one previously served on community boards, including First Presbyterian Church, Mead School, Mead Foundation, St. Barnabas Church, Sound Waters, Chairman of Marine Committee, Greenwich Land Trust Vice President and Co-Chairman of Land Stewardship Committee and Greenwich Historical Society Advisory Board. Is that the John Nelson who was approved today for this position?
I don't have that information. Friendly, I recognize a lot of the John Nelson that we interviewed. He was on those boards, so I assume it is, but do you have a question about that?
Because on this form submission for this meeting that I wrote and submitted August second, I put down, one important question is whether staff members assigned to the Historic District Commission has knowledge, interest, and expertise on matters that concern historic sites, monuments, buildings that memorialize A, veterans of U.S. military, B, members from the blue collar working socioeconomic class connected to barn, C, historic cemeteries. I request to receive confirmation that my participation in this meeting via Zoom is approved, and that's why I'm here, because Mr. Borse, although I wasn't listed on this agenda today, said that I was welcome to participate in relation to this form submission. So those were my questions that I would like to know as far as the Historic District Commission, because it's my impression that no one currently prior or proposed to be on this commission meets any of those criteria that I outlined, A, B, and C. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and you signed up for the public comment period, so that's, but if you were presenting an item, your name would have appeared there, so we normally don't print the names of people who just sign up for public comment, so, but I thank, I thank you for your, your participation today. I don't know if Janet has any thoughts or questions. Okay, thank you, Ms. Taylor. Appreciate, we appreciate that, your, your thoughts on that, and it's in the record. Okay, not seeing anybody else. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Janet Stomac Wigan, I move that we adjourn.
I, Fred Camillo, I second it. All is a favor. Perfect, Camillo, yes.
Janet Stomac Wigan, yes.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you, Ken. Thank you, Jenny. Thank you. Everybody who helped there and everybody who came on and stayed for the, for the full meeting. Appreciate it, and we'll see you soon. Stay dry.